All right, we will call this meeting to order at seven thirty-six P M. We stand issue for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will call please.
Supervisor McCann.
Here.
Trustee James Hickey. Trustee Kelly Hickey.
Yeah.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Ruckus.
Here.
Assistant Katzberg. Highway Commissioner Wiser.
Here.
Tax collector David Sriman.
Here.
And of course we'll speak here.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, we're gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment. If anybody has any public comment regarding, and I am on today's agenda including traffic, if I know several you are here for today. Uh, please feel free to step up to the uh microphone and leave your public comment, Bill, if you want to get that.
Might it be advisable just to have the four neighbors and people just introduce themselves to the audience so that they can see?
Sure, Tom, you wanna start? Introduce yourself.
And there, uh, we've been talking trustee, all the reason why I do that in front of the area.
There you go, trustee, that I have a hold. And, oh, please, oh, please, uh, Edmont, I'm the township manager. I'm Dave Sriman, I'm a tax collector slash cemetery manager and I love the paper. Tom Uzner, highway commissioner and.
We have a sixer and then one thing.
Uh, Michael Clowner, township supervisor, I live in one incorporated business in town.
Hi, I'm Anita Liski and I'm township clerk. I live in Naperville. I'm Kelly Hickey, I'm a township trustee and I live in Naperville.
Uh, Chief Hickey, township trustee, I also live in Naperville. Those are the elected officials and uh, and then we also had Bill Green, who's our senior administrator here at the topic. So if anybody has any public comment that they would like to uh make, please see Bill up there and speak to them.
Since there are our items on the agenda, it would persuade himself on the agenda.
Uh, this, this is a time to make any public comment with regards to any items that are on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to the traffic issues or any other issue, now it's even done.
Okay.
Thank you everybody, appreciate it. My name is Randall, Pat, thirty-six twenty-eight Kane Drive. That doesn't like me. And those uh. I, I am a committee member for precinct. Just wanted to be concerned about on the agenda, uh, seven point two discussing some trustees from the appointment. And it came to my attention that uh, we were a little off when it's statues that you really need a minimum of three months. To fill out vacancy, and I don't believe that happened. So if you could within your heart, take a look at that, maybe give it another whirl. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. And just as a reminder for everybody, um, not that you went over, but public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is uh, Rick Scherrle, and I reside itself in Naperville, and I'm referred to this uh, of the trustee was elected on. Uh, my, they didn't really follow what the statutes are, and because of what they've properly done, the relation we have with the trustee tonight, which we have a special meeting to have an election.
Walton Burko, Spore of by a piece of uh, Naperville. I jammed the appointment of this trustee having that followed process to formally point properly making a lawful trustee.
Good evening, I think these folks have stolen in a thunder, but I just wanna reiterate my feelings about this trustee appointment. Um, really should follow the law. And we just need to seek your better angels to do that, and I think you can see basically appointing a husband. I think it's just a tremendous time for the business. I think it's inappropriate. Not law though. And so we would just ask that you have a special meeting in order to have an actual election. Um, you know, the forest split. And I don't think we really have um, Republican representation. And you may say you're Republican, and it's super easy to just grab a ballot at a primary, call yourself a Republican for that election. And then really vote in. And I'm not saying that you would, but I'm saying that there might be a new influence and there's on what's on, and just add to my people's vote. They call a special meeting in the special election. Thanks for the.
So my name is Michael Wizniewski, and um, I went to a St. Patrick's Day party, had a number of mothers come up to me. The small children voiced some concerns about the school bus stops and the removal of the speed bumps. And uh, they asked them what they can do some action. So, I'm the person who passed the petition, I'm the person who selected the signatures, and um. I have concerns about the investment of a highway commissioner for the community. You know, I've asked you several times, what is the cost to put a speed bump in? You've never replied. You said it's too expensive. And I asked you, what is the cost of a chum's life? Blasphemous, never replied. So I'm asking you here, what is the cost to install and remove the speed bumps? And do you care personally about the safety of the children and the mothers in the way themselves? Because there are no sidewalks. People walk on the road with mothers with babies and carriages and old people pushing kids and strollers. And there's no safety, and there was under the previous administration for seventy.
Evening, Brian Evans, Cleveland Township, twenty-five. Actually, I'm kinda curious, I heard some of that names are saying. I'm assuming your husband and wife, uh, I know that in my house. By that decision that I want to pass, my wife will agree if she had an intention she wants to pass, she'll agree. So I guess my concern is that with both of you being trustees on a four-person lineup, this is. Would you want a four-person uh, four total trustees? Seems like it might not be the best balance. Not really saying that there's any kind of issue whether it's political or not, just a matter of you're in the same household. Seems like it's not really uh, the best way to get competing issues, competing thoughts. Uh, truly a different adage on things other than just, hey, you know what, here's what I want. Uh, not to say that you guys would do this or plan beforehand. Uh, it just seems strange that you would have something where you have to have two individual independent thoughts, thought processes. And ideas, but you're coming from the same household, so your ideas are very similar and on the same plane. It's my opinion.
I think on this, so I'm gonna go back to the traffic safety, uh, Joel Christensen, uh, eleven South five sixteen to the brat. Uh, lived there since oh one. And I, I was here when we did all this stuff back in whenever they built out Wagner Farms. And they wanted to connect Wagner to Wagner Farms. And the meeting was five times as many people, it was huge, it was a big deal. And I must say that Bill Olson really went to bat for us at that meeting. I did not. When that meeting started, I was standing there going, I don't know, Bill. And he went to bat for us, and he said, you know what? Yeah, we realize traffic is terror on Wagner and the brat. People drive really fast. And now, and the guy in Portia last year, he was easily going sixty-five miles an hour down the brat. I followed him to his house, and he and I had a little conversation. Uh, I never saw him again. But Tom's response to that was, see, that's great, you confronted that guy. What do you mean that's great? I confronted that guy. We need to do something. The speed bumps are sitting on a shelf right there, because you can't tell me we've gotta spend money on speed bumps. They're right there. Now, the cost to put them in and take them out every year, of course, they damage the road, and you're killing them. That's all gotta be factored in. I think this is really important, because they did a traffic study on McGrath and Wagner when they built out Wagner Farms. And even the attorneys for Holty said, you guys have a traffic problem. You have a speeding problem on McGrath and Wagner. I don't want the speed bumps, I don't like them, but I want them. I, I just have to dig myself, but I want the speed bumps. They're inconvenient, but that's why. Because it severely cut down on the amount of traffic and the speed of traffic that was coming out and down the street.
Hi, my name is Ken Madden, I also live on McGrath, and I'm pretty concerned, I've been there five years, I'm very concerned about the speed of something hard to drive on that road. I'm at the corner of McGrath and Wagner, so we're getting people coming, you know, I haven't seen sixty-five, I'm not, I don't have a radar gun, but I've seen fifty miles an hour. And that's just like your parents. I think I'm a nine-year-old, seven-year-old. I don't want them playing in front yard, because I'm concerned that some, you know, they're gonna get a ball in the street and, you know, they're, they're. If I tell them, hey, don't go in the yard, don't go in the street, but then, you know, if, if they're not paying attention, or if they, you know, they're nine and seven. Um, I have other neighbors that have three-year-olds, one-year-olds, it's, it's a concern. Um, to me, it's not a big deal. It's a little bit of inconvenience. Um, they, they should be there, there should be. There were two on McGrath, there were two on Wagner, and now we have, now we have, you know, speedometers, um, or the, the speed sign. And that, that people try to see how fast they can go on with that thing, that's more of a, that's more like tests or. Um, we need to, you know, speed, it's not gonna, it's not gonna solve, it's not gonna solve every problem, but it will definitely reduce the amount of speed. That's some of the criteria going. And if it was, you know, if, if neighbors from, if it was just a neighbor driving through, it'd be fine, but it's not. It's people, they're thorough, they're, they're, they're avoiding fifty-nine, they're, they're avoiding, well, they're coming down my road downstairs from my shoulder. Thank you.
Hi, I'm in Naperville, and also live in Naperville, we moved here around four years ago, there was a heat and spread of, you know, the speed bumps were here. And like my neighbor said, it wasn't really, but when they took them out, people are driving really fast. And even young people that don't have kids and they don't know the limits. So we really, you know, I am a mom of two kids, and I'm scared they'll be trying to go off, like, because I don't want them to leave that side where I do notions. The speed limit that they put for the test that they are doing, it's like a motivation to see how fast they may do. Like, yes, please, other than that, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Bassett, I live in Naperville. Well, I'm actually directly across the street from Ken, um, from the neighbors with three, that's, that's he's mentioned, um. Only a few houses down from me, the south side, that's is a suggestion about fifty percent of the time that people stop there. And the ones that don't come around the corners very quickly. Um, years ago, when we, we did have the speed bumps, one of them was fairly close to the vicinity of that sign, which I think actually helped encourage more people to stop. Um, and just like the other children, I hear my child, you know, running in the street, someone comes around the corner and it's, um. And actually, a handful of years ago, I don't remember the day exactly, but I used to, um, the previous road commissioner play those speed bumps. Then there was an evening, um, early evening, when my wife and I were working outside, and it was just. Set of, um, kids a drag race on the street, they landed up on the top side, and I'm convinced if the bumps were there, they definitely, that definitely would not, would not happen. So, yeah, I support uh, everyone there with requesting, you know, we, we save the speed.
Uh, hi, I'm Kristen Garrett here, I, I'm also on McGrath, like, I'm ten, and first we just, but, um. Also a mom of two kids, and we just moved here last year, sorry. But, um, but, uh, so we have a three-year-old, we already have a eight-month-old, and we have to go for a walk. We don't have sidewalks in the neighborhood, we did choose below the neighborhood, but it just scares me, um. You know, when we walk in the cars, just maybe I have no regard to people on the street, but, um, yes, we should get sleep.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Senior Farrel, or is I actually, she told me well, Timothy Rowan in Naperville, my resident for fifteen years. Uh, it was rushed, my attention, and I'm petulant about Mr. Hickey's commitment to being regarded as the board. Uh, I am concerned about it, and I would make a short tweet, I would like to request any special meaning to help to discuss that issue.
Other comments?
Can we speak, mercy? I'd like to ask the township attorney, if the child was killed or injured, the lack of safety procedures applied to township, is it township's vital?
That's a complete hypothetical question, but I'm also here to advise the, the elected officials. I, you know, the, the idea of me giving advice to the community is not.
Which law? Hmm? Which law?
I would, so.
Nice. I am so good. Hmm? I am so good at that, so glad. Thanks.
Any further comment before we proceed with the remainder of the agenda? Okay, carrying on, uh, given that this is the issue that brought many of you out tonight, I'm actually gonna request with even trustee that we bring that portion to the front of the agenda. Uh, that is okay with you all, so I'm gonna move to open the discussion on traffic safety.
Second.
Second, Kelly, if it is. And then I will open it up, you Tom, if you want to uh, give updates with, with the traffic safety decisions that have been made and how you guys are. Uh, thinking about what you will do to mitigate the speed issues going forward.
Every life matters, we, it's, you know, uh, you say that things, um. Stop there, uh. So, it is important for sake, it's important that we protect the kids. Uh, one of the key things, though, is I take a look at who the first responders are. First responders are the makeable, completely sensible father. They are recommending that it's not put speed bumps. City Naperville, which studies it a lot more than I've done. Uh, went on their website and to talk to, you know, their, their chief of police and support that thing, and now it's a simple thing. They don't, that's, City of Lord does the same thing. There are thousands of cities that have made that conscious decision not to speed bumps. It delays first responders, and every second counts for lives, okay? So, looking at that outcome, looking at that your first response, but you, you saw, are those people? And the things that you're looking at, I made a conscious decision that the speed bumps uh, should be removed. Also, we're taking a look at it, uh. How Naperville does it, we did studies, we looked at the speeds that were on those streets. And according to their Traffic County website, it's in the work of the Traffic County website. Uh, the speeds are, I hear about, you know, the, the speeding, things like that. What, what we've seen in the samples that we've taken, not continuously, but in the sample of mutation over a two-week, three-week period. That's uh, the top speeds uh, warrant what they call a level-one response. Which would be uh, enhanced, um, basically patrols, efficient patrols by uh, the police. Uh, and also putting up, you know, your speed signs, which uh, indicate how fat people are going. Tracking those particular uh, items and uh, providing people, uh, they go to block signs on streets to let people know what's going on there. That you guys are concerned about the speeds that are happening, and that's, it's something that is, uh, should be looked at.
Yeah, but it's, so, go ahead. Yeah, Tom, or just, we think, um. It would warrant a conversation with Naperville Police and Fire about this neighborhood specifically and their concerns. And whether it's no jurisdiction.
Not usable for these, or something.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, Naperville Fire.
Fire first response, that is what I said, Naperville Fire first response.
Would it warrant conversation with Naperville Fire to see, just to discuss that issue, the traffic safety issue, and kind of doing that, that analysis for that neighborhood?
I would, I would definitely entertain.
And if they are comfortable with, with speed bumps, then we will get.
Nice, nice question. You know, that's just a speaker. Is this his unilateral decision, or is this something that can be voted on?
Uh, the roads are the decision of the highway commissioner.
This is a, he uses all. He gets to make that choice.
That is, um, under the purview of the highway commissioner.
You've gotta hold him out if you want. So you've already made up your mind. You could dump them, you say. I can tell you've made up your mind.
All right, I know, that's, that's enough, thank you.
Okay. But, well, I'm constructive, no. I did have a long conversation with School District two oh four's board members. Who directed me to a resource within School District two oh four. Which is indicated that in some cases, they haven't set speed bumps in school areas, because there was a child that was struck by a car leaving the buses. I have looked at my numbers, and when I mentioned to the resource, I told this is doing for, that we have to share with you with supervisor. They mentioned, you mentioned, I thought you mentioned, correction, that it was the cost, and it was much, or it was cost additive. Well, it is a school state grant, you would apply for, and two also recommended, um. I think it's like delineation of the school crosswalk and still stopping here. A school bus, you can't say, so I'd be happy to share that with you. But I was, I was just reading that they eliminated their double regimental school speed bumps, because it's giving three examples. So, I, I'm not trying to.
Now, uh, i- if you go to the website, there are examples of, of speed bumps. Uh, in the city, in school areas, because of the convolutes of the numbers. Uh, what they do is, is that they look at it from a number perspective. You take a look at the volume of students that are in that area. And then the, the, the amount of traffic that's going in. And it's also permanent, uh, you know, these are permanent bumps that are, you know, I think it's called a speed pump instead of a speed bump. Uh, the ones that we put in because of the snow plowing are temporary, they're only done, uh, during, you know, during the, uh, the year. Uh, what I could entertain is, you know, because of what you guys are looking, if you guys can get a full-blown forum. Of, uh, of all the people on Wagner and Schulinter, I'd be glad to put them back. However, the, one of the things to take a look at from a design perspective, one speed bump on that distance of road is not gonna work. We got to put in probably three to five. So if you, and then, and then I want you to take a look at the situation where you are slowing down first responders. If you are having a heart attack, if your kids are being hurt, that first responder is gonna be slower to get to that person. That's the exact reason why Naperville has recommended against doing the speed bumps.
How much of a, yeah, that, that, when they look slower, would be, I mean, talking.
Second, you know, second's that, in the, in these things, you check with the, uh, the ambulance people, you know, someone's having a heart attack, someone's having a situation. Every second counts. I can't give you a bar number on that. But, uh, but right on, right on the website, you know, speed bumps, we do not, you know, that, that's a first.
So could you, to find either now or at a further township board meetings, you mentioned a quorum of the people on McGrath that went. And I don't wanna like run off and put on a petition, but if you'd like to, working with the supervisor and the board, you'll search that up. We find that, I think that the residents, if you happen to have a constructive conversation about that and supply, I think.
I think that's actually a topic, it's part of the, uh, part of the response to Naperville work with in city and talking to the neighbors. To let them know that there are concerns about, uh, driving speed on that figure too. Like you said, the numbers show and the volume of traffic shows that it's, would be a level-one response. Level-two response is other things, but e- even of all the level, you know, responses they have. Uh, they, unless it's a, a speed, a area, for example, a school or a hospital, or a hospital, Edward has, then a few other places. Uh, they would not install, specifically not install temporary speed bumps. And they would definitely not install, uh, or they look at the same, well, based on the volume of traffic, the things that are going on, we wouldn't solve permanently. Uh, because of the, you know, snowplow situation, we, we have strongly recommend, uh, absolutely not to do that. Not to do that, and, uh, and the other thing too is that there's a, a, a lot of evidence out there. That's, uh, and this is something that the, the folks at Naperville, is that if you put the speed bump. Um, what happens is, is that, uh, the person, you know, somebody flips their head, they slow down for the speed bump. And then what they do is, after the speed bump, they accelerate, which is the exact opposite of traffic calming. So.
Of traffic, well, what?
I'm trying, what? Uh, oh, it comes, you know, yeah, yeah, it's, uh, they actually work for saying you slow down, um, so, I'll talk about that.
No, no, it's okay.
That's, that's the, uh, uh, what's, what's, uh, you know, almost all municipalities follow traffic calming. Is the idea of putting up signs, putting up things to make sure that people are following the traffic, uh, rules of the road and other things like that. Uh, we have a tendency in township to go well above whatever, and I'm using some terms here, but it's M U T C D, which is the. State and federal codes for traffic signage. And even with them, they don't have anything specifically on speed bumps in there, uh, that I'm aware of. Um, but, uh, but we always follow those rules. Uh, um, you know, I, I could abarge you with that, but you can Google the stuff. There's lots of times where, you know, uh, there's some municipalities that put in speed bumps. And what we find is, is that they tear them out after a couple of years, because they find they do, they don't work. People are actually going over them and accelerating faster, and, uh, you know, like to avoid that. Like, the, the key thing that, you know, I'm looking at is both Aurora, Naperville, Honeyfield. Their first responders have all, you know, approached them, I, I reached out to them, I talked to them, and they're, and this is actually Naperville area. So, uh, their recommendation is not to put in speed bumps.
So, I understand your point about the, you know, the regulations. This is long ago, I had the same going around state, but they're putting in eight traffic calm circles, which was, I discussed. The common ground for me, the supervisor, the commissioner, is that the order of McGrath, Wagner, you have two stop signs. That violate, you know, these standards, often placing stop signs. There's road traffic coming in one direction, there's not a volume, and we both know that we can blow some stop signs. Outside only, if people obey them. But, kind of known for me is, is you do quote a number of logical facts, but then the illogical thing is you have two stop signs. That make no difference whatsoever to safety for Wagner and for McGrath, I think so exists. And I don't know why leave them up. And again, I would really appreciate. And again, I would really appreciate, what is the cost on an annual basis for a speed bump? To install, how do you install that, when do you get them? Would you and the supervisor like a copy of the people for link to the safe for school safety? Um, to make a request that will help to trade the cost of any uh, future uh, safety things you might put in?
Would you like? You're welcome to share those uh, with the commissioner.
Okay, I'm I'm finished, thank you very much.
Hi, Sarah, I have a question regarding the situation. Um, one of the mothers brought up, you know, there are inside problems with eliminating the population. So what is the potential that has been in that conversation of that, installing a sidewalk to expand the volume?
Uh, we, if we look at that, that's um, um, we're decided to go where the digits. The digits are there to prevent stormwater to get out, so we literally have to install all the municipality, municipal types, systems. That other places like Naperville were either required or. Or, you know, a developer like Fulton or Horton were writing a plan to want these people to put in. Um, I just wild guess that that would be very, very. Very, very.
Well, I mean, I think it should be, you know, at least look at, I mean, there was a part of the line. To me, it's something that they don't, they won't install anyways.
Yep, there, it's an unincorporated community, so generally incorporated communities do not have the sidewalk.
Always a residence be responsible, if you could do it, which is if you could install something else. Would that be simply residents would have the thing for?
Wouldn't have to be a special meeting for the person's special budget, tell them that.
I have to be alone there together, so that that would solve, since you're saying they're not going to slow down, giving the speed bumps. So you have a family and that that the kids getting here, so how would it? Also, the the time that they go through the city, most often the time they don't work. They install, works like two to three weeks and then they don't work. And then in the month after, they come and get it again, once upon a day, and again, they don't work. And like I said, I live in the middle of the world, and they drive to happen. They really die. So I don't want to lose life of the kid to find out how much. Yeah, that's sad, and I don't want to be the parents who are not even here to vote on this.
Who's in charge of enforcing that, what kind of share? And I assume you've spoken about, and you're trying to get some increased enforcement there.
Uh, yes, and then, you know, part of the things that we do is is by doing these, you know, the those signs actually are recording. Uh, I got them up now again on Wagner. Uh, and was recording uh, traffic on speeds. Uh, I haven't pulled the data since on the two weeks. The thing that Naperville does, which scientifically does show that it does affect traffic, is you take those speed signs. And you move them, there's, there's a lot of evidence that people become uh, blind to traffic. Uh, signage, uh, I mean, the volumes where, you know, literally it's that that sensation you have where. You left the office, uh, you know, forget about COVID pieces, but left the office, you go home. How the hell did I get home? I wouldn't remember that, it's just you're on autopilot. And part of that autopilot sensation is that people, um, you know, just flat out ignore or uh, the. Uh, unless there's a vivid change in the signage uh, to do that. But what happens is, and again, data shows that uh, after about two to three weeks. Uh, after you put something new there, for example, a receipt sign or a flashy sign or something along that lines. Uh, the effectiveness of that sign drops off. And you're right back to, yeah, so uh, and you and I, it was funny, you, you nailed it. Uh, I don't think you even talked about it, but we nailed it uh, during one of our conversations here. Uh, it's kind of an advertising thing, it's also, it's, there are studies, you know, volumes of studies that show this type of activity. Where uh, people just, you know, ignore that, uh, on a, you know, I was trying to do, like, there's one example, which is, I'm calling it my own sort here. I was doing an inventory of stop signs and I literally drove past one of my stop signs twice because it's like, you know, I I'm so used to this. Oh, and then I had to go back there, I know there's one there, and then, oh, there it is, and it was just because I was. Sliding along, going through all these features there, but it's so, uh, go ahead.
So wouldn't it make sense to have the speed bump because they're, they're not, they're not getting, you're not getting lost in this position? You're actually physically having to stop to comment, I mean, so if you're, but you're right, if you do, if you just kind of do the same, same not every day. You may not be looking at the sign, but you have to, you have to stop at the speed bump, otherwise you're going to ruin your car, so. Ask one question for residents from the neighborhood, those that you're observing, I'd just for curiosity, those that you are observing that are speeding through the neighborhood. Do you feel like it's people who are traveling through the neighborhood to get from one end to the other, or are they individuals who actually live in the neighborhood? Or is it a mix of both?
I don't, I don't know every car, obviously, but I I would say the majority of the people, and this is, you know, a straw ball, just because I, I know a few some of us. Are not neighbors, or people that are.
So you feel like it's people who are driving through the neighborhood that's possibly live in the neighborhood?
Correct.
Understood.
Like I said, it's just, it's a thoroughfare for them, it's easier than taking fifty nine. Guys, it's too much traffic, it's late, so I just cut in. It's about Book Road or fifty nine? No, no, um, both, I mean, it's a, it's a shortcut for a lot of people, but they don't have to deal with fifty nine, they have to deal with Book, they can just cut through the neighborhood, they can go straight down. Got it, they're going fifty, you know, um, I I'd be curious how many cars are actually going down. Going down, I mean, I'll sit out in my driveway and there's, you know, three cars a minute, you know, every day, that's a lot of cars, so. But, you know, it's, it's, uh, instead of doing a FOIA, uh, uh, you know, if you give you information, I can share you the data that was generated. At the farms when in, uh, in that report, they talk about volumes, uh, it's a little scientific, but it tells you. Uh, for example, on a, uh, I think it's standard weekday, it was somewhere in the three thirty to three fifteen range. Uh, weekends, yeah, number of cars, and this is, that could be the whole neighborhood. Uh, so uh, they, don't, don't do a FOIA, just as a beginning, I'll, I'll be glad to share that with you. I know there's a few people that have that study from when um, the gentleman brought up uh, the, which I think is wonderful, uh, the importance. Because the neighborhood came out and said, we do not, the idea was is that that dead end uh, was going to be a first street.
Right.
And the thoughts were that, you know, I'm still thinking both times, which is what we studied about. Does that allow you access to fifty nine going through Wagner Farms? Uh, clearly, uh, there was a ground swell, which is how this thing works.
Right.
Uh, people saying no, and the, and that's what happened, you know, it was turned down and uh, now we have that, that is.
Right, I mean, I live, I live right there.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm at the corner of that essential, so I wasn't there when it was, when it was discussed, but I wouldn't want that to go with, yeah.
I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a serious, you know, when I look at that and hear the stories about that, I think that's how it's worked, you know, you know, the, the neighborhood spoke. And neighborhood said no, and, you know, hopefully, you know, the, the response was correct and they said no to that first street, and that's what happened. Um, I'll double check on the, you know, uh, I, I think, you know, you've said that it's not necessary. Uh, uh, that sign, you know, the stop sign that's kind of in the opposite direction, which only really uh, is for the two people that are coming out of that, going in that direction. Uh, I believe that is something that Bill will install.
No, he did it, and there is a special means that I want to tell to my opponent, for the best of my recollection. Back in the day, and I, since then, I think you know, all of the blinking lights, but I, that family is wrong.
I think, yeah, then the blinking lights are also with an addition, uh, again, before uh, mine bombing. That's also, uh, uh, that is a, uh, uh, you know, state and federal, that's the next level up, you know, this is progression of making these changes.
Right.
Uh, for the roads to see, you know, how things are working and uh, and then you go through that. The key thing is a lot of studies is that, again, uh, because of this known issue with uh, people becoming kind of blind to it. Uh, and uh, we essentially ignoring that, because we, at least three people, four people, if I have my notes for us, I'm kind of alluding to it, so the people who are already self-identified, so. Uh, I apologize, that's happening. Uh, I will say one other thing that I've heard repeatedly from, again, Naperville is, uh, I, I. Really commonly still do this, but uh, back in the day, uh, if you were a concerned city, if you live in Naperville. They literally said, hey, you know, uh, if you're concerned about this neighborhood, sit in the back of the car. I'll sit out there and we'll go see what the speeding is, and then they would, you know, take the speed bump out and pull someone over. Uh, the stories that I've heard over and over again is that, uh, um, literally it's your neighbor down the street, it's usually the mom. Or the, the husband needs to get home for dinner or something like that, and then he realizes they're going faster, so. Uh, I don't want to be hard on anything, but that's, I've heard that story over and over again from the Naperville folks. Who have looked at uh, this kind of stuff over and over again. Uh. There you go.
I think next steps, it would make sense to have a conversation with Plainfield Fire, um, and their department. To figure out a way that we can put in some uh, traffic calming measures. That in a way that allows them to do what they got to do, but also address the concerns with the residents, so. Um, whether it be speed bumps or the number of speed bumps that they think they'd be comfortable with on a specific road or whatever it may be, I think that could be a proper one, so.
I didn't plan on speaking, but it is the local county sheriff's office jurisdiction of that neighborhood. We have an app where you can put in a traffic complaint, feel like I recall some people, some of them ask, and so it's get sent to everybody. I'm the patrol level, because there is four of us from Naperville, it's time of the night, I do not sit in the neighborhood all day, just running rate. We have a patrol division, which that is their main job. That would be my number one recommendation with all of you at once from bar a traffic lane. It will, it will get the sergeant, Kyle, the co-maniac is in charge of the patrol division, that'd be a contact if you guys.
Uh, thank you so much. And the other, the other thing to add to that is when I talk to the traffic people, is uh, when we do these traffic studies, is that, um, it does show. There's a lot of bell shaped birds over that, and it just shows when speeding happens. And by letting them know that at a specific time and individual feedback, like, hey, listen, you know, it seems to be always at. Eight thirty in the morning, you know, I'm seeing these things going on, uh, that's very helpful, uh, to the uh, traffic people. And, and it sounds like it's a volunteer, just received.
That small technical question, had a neighbor drive down, you've met her, her name is Laura. She has one of her, one of your signs you gave her, she met you in your office, she's on Wagner Drive. She named a claim today that if you swing out in the road past, so like I mentioned, the radar detection thing, that it doesn't catch the car. That there's like, has she, well, so, so she claimed that she tried three times when she came to my house. So that what she says, what she says, I know what's dear saying, like lawyer. That is, I'm adding, no, I know, I wanted to be a lawyer, anyway, so I would appreciate if there's any, you thought about that. Come back, if I don't know, or something like that. After she claimed that she sees people that swing the other side of the road, they see that light go up, then they just go like passing, and it sounds very stupid. I don't know if it's true or not, but just piece of information, and now I'm.
I love it, yeah, no, uh, uh, that's all good, I mean, you know, getting some feedback is what this legislative process is all about.
If you all are, as I might say, that you'd be willing, perhaps, provide at the intersection where the school bus stop, I mean, that's up to you. Yeah, thank you very much, what are, what are the next step?
So I, I mean, Tom, I think what I said appropriate is probably to reach out to Naperville Fire. Um, make sure that you discuss with them the concerns of the residents. Uh, what, how many speed bumps, you know, they be putting and the kind of placing of some of those speed bumps. Um, and then kind of reporting that those details back and if you all, um, if you all. If you want to leave your, either, yeah, we got the sign in sheet there, um, we can put something on, or how about this? If everybody wants to make sure you're following the Facebook page, first of all, if you have Facebook. Forget some updates from the road highway commissioner, because he has a very active Facebook page on there. And then also on the website, we can go into the traffic studies area, you can put some of the details that you're talking about, some of the data. For that people can review the data if they'd like to, um, and then, you know, after having that conversation with Naperville Fire. To determine when we can go ahead and put those traffic calls. Uh, should this be Wheatland Township Road District? That's for the highway departments, and then the just general township should be official Wheatland Township Illinois. You type in official Wheatland Township, that should come up as well. Uh, for the Facebook page, and then the, the website is just WheatlandTownship.com.
Uh, just one, one little thing is like, when it's, when the speed bumps are in. One of the things that uh, happened on a very regular basis was people going out and removing the speed bumps and us having to reinstall them. Because there was certainly a backlash from several people who did not want, scribbled those speed bumps. Uh, I can't count how many times that we, we had to spend it on the services to pay out there. Uh, they get a, they pack wrench, and that's all they're needing, you know, throw them in a ditch, so uh, uh, yeah.
All right.
Yes, um, if I could comment, um. I've raised two songs in Naperville, and we live in Ashbury, we live on Conandale Road, it's the main drag, it's about a mile long strip. And because it's the main thoroughfare for the subdivision, there are no speed bumps allowed. Um, I have seen people doing fifty, sixty miles an hour, I've seen kids drag racing, I've seen all that, um. Never seen a fatality or, and that type of an accident because we have sidewalks. So, you know, when we talk about speed bumps, I think we're chasing the wrong issue. I mean, there's, there's two solutions here, one is avoidance and the other is deterrence. Sidewalks are avoidance, you keep people out of the road, okay, however, that's an accepted expensive solution. Um, the other is deterrence. Okay, there, there seem to be, I saw a lot of heads nodding when it was suggested a special assessment for sidewalks or, you know, some agreement or something like, you know, we'd be willing to do something. But I would think a much more cost effective solution would simply be speed cam. Uh, you know, I, I'm not an engineer, I don't know how much they cost, but.
Be what?
A speed camera.
Oh.
It, it just seems to me, you, you're not going to, I don't, I don't think speed bumps are really the issue, like I said. You know, you can go by Equal Valley High School, thousands of kids go in and out of that school, crossing streets every single day, and there's no speed bumps. Okay, so I don't think speed bumps are really a solution, I think it's avoidance, there's good sidewalks around it, there's traffic signals there. And, you know, there's deterrence, there's always a police presence, there's traffic signals to slow people down, um. I think a potential solution that I would love to offer, or at least investigate, is, you know, why not simply a speed cam? You know, it, it may self fund, I don't know exactly how the mechanics of it work as to where the fines go. Um, but it seems to be, seems to me. Uh, you know, every place I've ever been and every driver I've ever known, if you see that sign, it's a speed radar, you know, speed camera enforced, people slow down.
Sorry, but thank you. Uh, this is well beyond, uh, excellent feedback, um. Amen, you know, uh, there, there are some articles and and thoughts like that, uh, the other thing too is, um, it's also the design, it's kind of like. Much longer, but the, it's what you, you know, if you're going down a road and you, the road looks like it's a forty five mile an hour road, depends if it's still thirty five. And Wagner, I, I, you know, Wagner, the graph, yes, they look a little bit like a drag ship, uh. Uh, so, you know, people, you know, you know, it's a long, you know, that's, that's the design of it. So one of the things to be is to implement, you know, this is actually traffic level response for Naperville's thing, but we do a redesign of the road. And literally in some of the new subdivisions that are being built, uh, they're literally doing that, instead of having like a Conandale, that's just as long, straight route. They're making these roads a little bit more serpentine, specifically because they're building in the traffic, so you don't have to do that, which is why she talked about having. So uh, that, that is a thought, and that would be a kind of like. That, that is a thought, and that would be a kind of like, you have to figure out how to, you know, where to put the out popping and move stuff around. I'm not sure how we do that. But then, but then it's also warranted on the, on the data. You, you know, like I said. The studies that I'm aware of, that we've done on Wagler and Chili here and some of the other streets. Uh, we're always, that, you know, it's a level one response, uh, which is, you know, so I have another website, which is basically uh added enforcement, your speed signs. Alternating the government's beliefs, uh, putting up uh sonic drop back and also educating the public that your neighborhood is coming. Uh, it's, it's, you know, if you see, even going set around like twenty seven, eighty mile an hour, the town is out there. Uh, other people almost on, then, then you, you rank it up, you know, you go, you know, you go to those levels. Uh, but what's, what's the, the. Science says that you, you, you do this incrementally until you get to that level. And that we do these other cheap measures sparingly for us. Uh, well, you know, wonder if that, if there's other, other things that can be like a speed radar, you do that sparingly because you want to do it in specific areas when you don't get that much. Very bad. Thank you so much.
Is this your longest township meeting?
No, no, no.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm done.
Thank you all for your comments. Uh, next item on the agenda, can I get a motion to approve our April ninth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
We'll make it. Now. Oh, we're going back into regular and uh into the.
Sorry.
So we're back to the approval mails. So second part, can you have the first in a second? Hearing on both all please. Yes.
Uh, trustee Jay. Trustee K.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yeah.
Trustee Rockus. Right, the uh eight, so meeting minutes unanimously passed five to zero.
We do. Let's go make sure it's good in there. Are they gonna, I think you. All right, uh, next item on the agenda, can I get a motion to, to the amendment to the previous approved, uh, December fourteen, twenty twenty three regular session minutes?
Motion.
I second.
All right, uh, you, I have a copy of the uh changes. Uh, the first page is the original and then the highlighted section is the one that is. Uh, that I'm questioning that we change. This is, it would just apply to all the previous. Pretty straightforward on that. All right.
Volta.
Yes, please.
Uh, supervisor Croner.
Yes.
Trustee K Higgy.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Rockus.
Yes.
And Jim, you weren't here for those, so we'll, we'll call you president. Okay, um. All right, so I'm sorry, the amended meeting, uh, meeting minutes from, is it December?
Yes.
Pass uh.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, can I get a motion to open discussion on the trustee appointment process? Okay, can I get a second, please?
Thanks.
All right. So Lauren, this will be the request that we put on the agenda.
Um. I was at the table, my attorney, but I didn't know you were there. You're not my attorney, but I didn't know this. So, um, I would certainly appreciate, um.
So you're.
No. Um. I'd like your opinion, um, what this transpired.
Well. I've given an opinion to you and to the board and. Do anyone's ask.
Okay.
But. You're typically the ultimate legal advice. In public that's done and executive, I do have to do that. We did an executive session, but what I can say is. Uh. You know, and I told this, I think to, to several people is that. Once someone is um sworn in. The board no longer has any remedy to remove them. So there's no recall, there's no, there, there's no legal remedy for this board sitting here right now to. Say that he was appointed and filed. So there's a. Because once he's sworn in, then you're right for the object. So there is a procedure in. The Illinois Code of the Four River Procedure, where if someone is, you believe someone is seated improperly in a seat. Go to the state's attorney, go to the attorney general and tell them, why do you think they're improperly in the seat?
What if they won't pay attention?
If they won't pay attention to you, then you can, you can file an lawsuit. Right, but, but as we sit here today. You, if you have, if everyone here voted today to remove. But if you, as you proceed, that would be an invalid motion. You don't have, you do not any longer have the legal authority to do that.
And remind some of the folks that stuff around why their signatures on their platform at town meeting don't, don't. Work.
Because there's no vacancy. Uh, so, so, yeah, so there has to be a vacancy in order to have a special meeting.
You don't classify anything as an illegal.
Right. With.
You keep saying an appointment, I think it's just legal or a legal appointment. It was based on, you know, legal action of two votes, needed three. So it's like, that doesn't matter.
At this point, sitting here for this board, no, you don't have the legal, e- even if that was in threat, you don't have, you do not have the authority to press.
I, I, I think maybe in different form of time. What I think people are really asking are two things. Number one, was the appointment legal? Number two, what is impact? If, if for the safe argument, the appointment. Number two, what are the ramifications? Have any legal? Just a person appointed illegally. Both issues for these board. I think the board members. Wouldn't need to be advised as to those two questions in order to ensure that the votes that Mr. Picky has taken. Are not. I don't know what the legal word is, which is odd because on the order, but whether there's, there's ramifications as a result of that, I think. The trust needs to depend maybe on the only, but want to make sure that. We have a prop, we have a process that is unfeasible, but two, that the votes that you can take are unfeasible for stuff. And then I doubt they can answer those questions in a public forum, but I think that those are, those are the main two issues that I think. Those speaking as a non going number of the board, that the board numbers were going to be a process. That you need to mention.
And, and because of, of the FOIA rules and open meeting rules and attorney fine privilege. You know, the, you're right that, you know, those are not questions I can answer in a public forum. Um, there are two ways to do that. One is any of the trustees, supervisor, and. Calmate, and, and I can talk to them about it. Um, or you can have an executive session on the next board meeting, and we can go into executive session and then talk to all of the. Board members about it.
Yeah, has, have you specifically been asked by any of the trustees or by the supervisor to answer, to give a legal opinion on either of those questions?
Yes.
And have you survived answers to those questions yet? And how, how were they able to convince others? Well, I think, I think they were provided. Okay, in terms of what you can, what you can uh explore from public, but got it.
He could voluntarily be honest. He could. That all over the whole process, always. Who's the argument? Hmm, who's the argument? But I'm.
No, that's actually another issue. I did not request marrying you. And I did not request that it be done without me. I was expecting.
But there's a, there's a. Certification that's been signed, right?
Not by me.
Whoa.
I wasn't here.
Whoever does could be a piece.
I asked when he's gonna be sworn in and I received no response. So I was not invited to the public in replacements swearing.
I have only had to.
The deputy clerk.
Okay.
But I didn't get written notice. I didn't do that.
So. Another.
My understanding is that I would, I needed to give written notice.
Was there any?
Okay, so a, a third question I would ask is, have you been asked by the supervisor by me to, to, to do that?
Yeah.
And if we, if they want to, you know, at least to ask for your. And if, and if Tommy and, and the trustee wanted to get answered to any of those three questions for, for the success, absolutely.
Mr. Warren. With a phone. What's helpful on that?
Yeah.
And I apologize, I haven't been, I haven't been involved in any of this stuff in terms of trying to ask questions, but I think it's all good for all of the care members.
Any further questions? Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, can I please sit for motion to approve town and road district fund fills and play? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we gotta go back to old, we missed all this.
Mm-hmm.
Probably. Uh, can I get a motion to approve or open approval for ordinance twenty four dash zero two dash O town fund budget?
I move to open discussion for approval of ordinance twenty four dash O two dash zero town fund budget.
Can I get a second, please?
Right.
Okay. Uh, so the budget has gone for several days or for a few months now. It's been public. Um, I am actually gonna put forward a few amendments. Uh. Uh, to, for that budget, they're actually, oh, sorry, I don't know if you all still have your previous topics of the budget. Let me just ask you something. The budget that you posted on your website, is that current proposal you're standing on right now? Uh, I'm not sure which budget you are looking at on. Well, the point.
It, it's, it should be, it should be, right? Unless, are you, are you making changes?
Twenty four, twenty five. This is one I don't twenty five. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I just have one question exactly. The, the general administration funds. Okay. Like four fifty, something like seven thirty, I mean, it was almost like a doubling. Or I think you said increase, I wanted to be there. Uh. Anything more, which, here, here's a copy, you can have this. Go to uh, it's page three, they have a town fund recap. And if you look at the uh. The actual budgets, the forty three, forty four, five, forty five. If we're just with the seven eleven. Yeah, so. So those are the actuals that the budget last year was seven oh six. We just actually came in under budget by significantly. Saw that, wondered if that. Yeah, so we just came in significantly under budget last year. Why do you expect to be doing that much of a difference? And so that's actually one of the things that I want to address right now. I'm gonna revise that, you'll be lying. Yes, so one of the things here, um, some of the items were items that could be coming up in a fiscal year. They don't always come up, or we have the budgets for them, because if not, uh, then what would happen is if we needed to extend those funds and you don't have it in the budget. For, let's say, for example, building improvements, we haven't always had to be building improvements. We would then have to kind of do a revised amendment, and it would slow our process down for being able to actually do this. Right. So it's always been budgeted there. Um. And the budget hasn't really moved in a significant direction in the last, I think this is now our fourth, third budget approval. Um, and it's been one, two percent here or there movement on the budget. So I saw, I just saw that big item there, it's kind of like, and I thought that you budgeted for before. Yes. Hey. And then there's items on there, like again contingencies. Oh, yeah, I, I saw. Um, oh, my. Thanks for the question. Uh, so the uh line items that I am going to. Uh. I'm gonna move that we amend uh building maintenance uh from seventeen thousand down to fifteen thousand. So that's a twenty five hundred dollar reduction. I'm gonna move that we. Uh, use building improvements from twenty thousand down to ten thousand, so a ten thousand dollar reduction. And then the contingency from twenty five thousand down to ten, twenty thousand, which is a five thousand dollar uh reduction.
All right, what was that last one?
Uh, contingency. Down uh by thousand.
And what's what?
Uh, from twenty five to one.
Yeah.
And uh, so thanks, Jim, I was looking at your trend analysis and this helped me to kind of inform some of these uh reductions on here. Uh, so with that, that would reduce the overall budget for the general town fund disbursements, uh, seventeen thousand five hundred from the current proposal. So that would actually be an overall reduction in the budget for last year.
Seventeen hundred?
Uh, seventeen thousand five hundred. Can I get a second to approve those amendments?
Second.
Uh. Can I try again? Yes, so building maintenance, dropping that number twenty five hundred dollars.
Fifty.
Yes. Building improvements, dropping that number, I'm sorry, building, yeah, building improvements, dropping that down to ten thousand from twenty. And contingency, dropping that number five thousand as well. So total reduction to overall budget of seventeen thousand five hundred of the proposed budget. Uh, just looking at the trends in the recent years, those numbers, we've yet to get to even the proposed numbers for those. Um, so no reason I have that necessarily on there. You'll roll call on the amendment to the budget.
Did you get a motion?
Yes, I mo, I moved and uh, that was accepted.
Okay, uh, roll call, let's be here. Um, supervisor.
Yes.
Trustee J Higgy.
Yes.
Trustee K Higgy.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yeah.
Trustee Rockus.
Yeah.
Okay, the amendments unanimously passed five to zero.
And then any further comment before we do a final approval of the budget as amended? There are none, final roll call? Yes.
Um. Travel for one of the meetings in the last. Well, she's talking about uh township fund, you know, it's. I don't see the line item, perhaps it's included or something else.
I don't see that uh here right now, but what we can do, uh, if we come up together with a. Scalate program, you can amend the budget at that time for that number. So I'm very comfortable adding that in.
I don't want.
Also, what's not here? What's not here?
Yeah.
All right, uh, you were doing the final roll call?
Supervisor.
Yes.
Trustee J Higgy.
Yes.
Trustee K Higgy.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yeah.
Trustee Rockus.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the ordinance twenty four dash uh zero two dash O town budget unanimously passed with five to zero.
Uh, next item on the agenda, approval of ordinance under twenty four dash zero three dash O uh road district budgets. Again, motion, please. Uh, any comments for Tom before we move on to final?
Trustee Jay Hickey. Trustee Kay Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Rocket.
Yeah.
Right, uh, ordinance twenty four dash zero three dash oh road district budget, you know, it's a half is five to zero.
Yeah, uh, next up, can I get a motion to approve the town and road district fund building claims?
I'll make that motion.
Any questions or comments?
Sorry, Mary, I'm here, um. Expensive, uh, just tell me a little bit about the uh. Uh, events you went to downstate. Twenty dollars, which it says for lunch and. I forgot to submit markers, I didn't submit a mark.
Will County.
All kinds of stuff. You go every month. Why is the clarification? We all go, we all go.
No further questions, roll call, please.
Supervisor Crown.
Yes.
Sorry, this is road as well. This is.
Yes, we always have done both.
I'm so sorry, I used to.
Do you have another comment?
I do. Just on your expenses, uh, looks like mileage one way to be catered and then sorry mileage back as well.
Yeah, I I decided not to take a drug, uh, you know, um. For various reasons, uh, it gets turbid, that's mileage and. A lot of stuff in the back.
Back to the vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Crown.
Yes.
Trustee Jay Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Kay Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Racus.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Moving on to reports, Senior Administrator Bill Green.
Just kind of tou- touch base on some of the things we did. Um, I did double check when I first started, I talked about library cards because we were talking about. About getting library cards and I did verify with the Joliet Junior College and the colleges who page that if residents. Live in an unincorporated area, but you're paying taxes to one of those two colleges, you can go to the college and get a free library card. And use it. So, um, I know some people say they spend a lot of money to get a library card, but you're paying taxes to the one of those two colleges. And they will give you a library card to use. Um, food distribution, we we did that last month, um, and actually Kenny was just here and we talked before the meeting. Um, they are losing a little bit of their uh grant money um for next year um on on the uh. Program that we use, so he's gonna wo- work together a little bit and uh discuss that for the future. Uh, he he's the executive director of the Northern Ohio Food Bank. Uh, seminars, uh, been to a FOIA seminar just yesterday that was on and also grants. Uh, Open Meetings Act was, they're always good to uh watch and uh and just kind of touch this refresher course. Uh, went to a Wintrust one, which was kind of actually just wasted time. But uh, they're not all, they're not all uh good, but Wintrust has been an excellent bank for us, so that's why I kind of went. We're uh doing uh some financial education uh for the uh Government Finance Officers Association. I'm involved in that. Um, and then our community programs that I've I've been I've been trying to help with. Uh, the Plainfield Sherwood Chamber, I've been to a couple of the rimbed cuttings. It doesn't take a lot of times, but it shows support to those new. Uh, businesses in the community that the township's available. Uh, Path to Recovery, helping those to fight uh addiction. Um, that one's obviously near and dear to my heart and that's uh all around the area. We have counseling at the different jails. Um, and things like that. Uh, again, no cost to us, no, no cost to the uh people that are that are uh suffering. Uh, recycling extinguishers keep on coming, so that's the one thing that we are continue to do is um. Uh, we get a lot of uh fire extinguishers and I did find a new one. Right down the street on Route fifty nine at thirteen five eleven is you break, we fix. They take in any electronics to recycle at no cost. So it's right there on fifty nine. If you're down there and you're gonna get rid of something other than a tube TV. They'll take it. That's it. Any questions?
Okay, just adding to that recycling thing. Did you see the thing from our uh? Yeah, the notice that the flyer that's going out from the. The garbage, our garbage service.
From LRS.
Yeah, so all of the all of the residents will get notification of electronics that they can distribute, you know, that they can get rid of.
Yeah, I'm gonna put on our website, but free options as well. Yeah, and LRS, I think, will be charging individuals for those services.
Uh, as a countermeasure, um, I would also add, Will County Greed, uh, it's a website.
Will Co- yeah, Will Co-Green.
Yeah, Will Co-Green, uh, they um, there are drop offs, nearest drop offs to us for everybody is uh the Bolingbrook uh. Park District Facility Parking Lot, I think it's the first and fourth Tuesday uh of the month. Uh, from the sixth to eighth or something like that, and uh they will take two TVs and three, everything else for. Save save the.
Thank you.
That's a cats burn.
So, um, getting there. Uh, which is, you know, based on prior review of. Income taxes. Uh, when it's that and then just the regular scene exemption, we try to put out there, if you're sixty five or older, please sign up if you haven't. There's no way that, we don't know how old anyone is going to purchasing our homes, so. You know, there's really no way to communicate that with them, let them know. Um, so please do um make that available to yourself, let's say they. The exemptions actually went up this year. So I should say twenty twenty three is levy payable this year. Uh, the general home set exemption, which pretty much everybody has, that was six thousand last year, it went to eight thousand. And the senior exemption went from five thousand to eight thousand as well. Uh, that that part of them, threes is a different thing where it's an economically based. Um, if it's low concern low income, then that's something that would be need to be applied for every year. Uh, so, you know, it's we're glad to see people come in and refer them to. The main thing is I can tell any of you is passing, please check your tax bills every single year to make sure your exemptions are on. They are only allowed to go go back up to one year. They, you know, because the tax dollars have been distributed, so it's not, you can't go back further than that. So a good idea to do this, take a look, give us a solid, we'll all take it out.
Mary, can I ask real quickly, do you know the status of the bill that Senator Elman put forward about senior, is it's about senior freezes, correct? Okay, I had contacted her office to have her come explain it to my seniors, but I just wondered if you. Oh, very nice. I'm adding you to the list.
To be honest with the county, we are, um. Because it's a huge responsibility, we we at our township, we don't finish filling out the form. We literally take the information, general information, and then it goes to the county. You hand deliver all of our. Redemption to the county, you don't mail them anymore. Um, and then. The county is the one that's responsible for deciding on the freeze forms. It's not. It's a sixty five thousand dollar full household income. It's not the easiest to figure out because it counts. Everyone in the household, I have a twenty eight year old, I would have to count his income. Um, in my house, uh, so it's not just cut and dry, you're ten forty, here's your adjusted gross, it does. Uh, encompass some of the social security and that, so. We're not at all comfortable doing it because we want to make sure people are getting everything they should, but we can fill it out so far, it goes to the county. If they have questions, they generally will send a mailing. Um, you know, and say, I need this or, you know, there's. Uh, but if they're at all close to that amount, we include them. This freeze, that's a very considerable savings over several years. So people that have a free bill. This is like, you know, years and years down the road, but like thirty thousand of assessment that's, you know, times the. So it's a huge save, it's a potential huge savings over years. Um, so it's a very, I'd be happy to kind of pull that, but we don't really finish filling out the form, but we send it to the county and. They're expert and they have to make a decision on whether it's they're eligible or not proper.
Mary, I have a question. Um, I had somebody call me the other night, like. Really mad because their property tax bill went up, and I know you guys, you have nothing to do, and I'm sure you hear this all the time, right? Um, so if someone wanted to make them feel. With any of their assessment in your office, how would they go about doing that?
The problem is the appeal happened in August. From August of twenty four. As we feel the tax bills for next year, and so no one thinks that they're that the bill may all along and say, but I understand because we're all tax paid too. But um, you cannot appeal when the cash goes up. It has been all appealed. That doesn't mean that if there's some error on the property, not not that kind of thing. There's any error in contact, so. We say lots bathrooms or something like that. We will remedy that and go back as far as we can, you know, but not that one year. So the the hardest part to get. It out there, I don't know if you have probably really do it, but it's because you can't get that assessment notice that you don't understand because of. That's the time you're gonna run, try to figure out about your bill and. And what you need to do, you can say, you know, it's it's to take that assessment, get out your symptoms, multiply that. And it's it's very simple math, but no one knows.
We make it complicated so that they have to tire of the.
So what you're saying is in our heads.
And they just would make a final.
And if this year holds true to what it has been in years past, we get a letter from different attorneys asking us to check out our assessments. And make sure that we can start appealing them, right? At home.
Oh, oh.
To our to our homes. We uh we do get that because I brought it into Chuck previously, but yeah.
I had one, we used to live in um in Nashville Township in Meadow Lakes. And I got a solicitation like that, and I think it's through the HOA, and I called that HOA and said, what are you doing? You know, this is free. Our services, if you do your homework, is free. There's no charge, no cost, no percentage, and so we get pretty irritated that they do this. They're just making.
Thank you for clearing that.
There's you. Uh, next up, Highway Commissioner Tom White.
Uh, so exciting times. So we started the road program uh this week. I actually checked it last week. Uh, we're doing uh. Hundred ninety streets, hundred eleven streets. Uh, from Route thirty to the county border. Uh, we're also doing some roads in uh Samorek and Delphal Park down. Uh, I believe it should be wrapped up in a couple of weeks. Uh, then I'll say another spot and talk to a lot of residents, uh. Give a precursor that uh, if you see a road and it's freshly tarred, I would recommend not to get on it. The stuff sticks to your tires and uh it's hard to get off.
I'll just save a great all of them. Made me a little late, but it's all good. For kidding, they were very nice. They came and moved the trucks like.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee James, no report for this year. Trustee Kelly Hickey.
Um, I'll give the senior report. Um, we held our luncheon April seventeenth. At Wheatland Township, uh, Wheatland Salem Church. Uh, we played bingo, uh, subs were served. We had twenty eight seniors in attendance. Uh, that's a little bit of an uptick and the new people all said that they learned of our group through the newsletter, so that was nice. Um, we held our senior committee meeting on uh. May eighth, the next luncheon will be May fifteenth. Uh, we'll be serving fried chicken and a naturalist from Will County Forest Reserve will come and speak. About the appetizing topic of cicadas, so. Um, the luncheons are held at Wheatland Salem Church, as I said, and we are grateful to Pastor Zaki there for his continued support of our program. It's really been nice to be able to use that space. Um, I'm working with Senator Capel's office. Uh, for a fraud seminar for seniors. And um. That's it. And Senator Alman's bill, if I can have Mary come talk about it, that'd be awesome. That's all.
Kelly, Trustee Jones. Uh, just remind everybody, H B fifty fifty, show. Proper information, so. Thank you. Trustee Racus. Thank you, Trustee, I'm sorry, clerk.
Okay, mine's really quick. Uh, we had two FOIAs and and one was a mistake, so thanks Bill for resolving that and the mistakes like. We were the wrong Wheatland Township. They were looking for somebody in Minnesota for that FOIA, so we passed uh, passed that information along. Uh, I confirmed completion, everybody, everybody did their statements of economic interest, thanks, and uh. Thanks for not yelling at my nagging. And then just lastly, I uh finished up the annual meeting minutes and I've sent them to the person. Mister Ken Miller, who was our moderator, and those should be finalized pretty quick here.
Thank you. Next, we're scriven you.
We had our cemetery planned by April twenty seven. Um, so we get rid of some of the older deparations. And we had one day ago.
Uh, last up, I don't have very much for report. Um, I did submit our docs for our lovely. And confirm that we are the lowest township tax rate in Will County and the lowest. Um, for the road district as well, and that's as a point of reference for history. It is, I only went back to twenty fourteen and it is the lowest uh tax rate on both sides since at least twenty fourteen. So we don't, we can't be mindful of the dollars. That's all I have on my report. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second.
Right.
All in favor?